Good evening. Welcome to the November 4th, 2020, meeting of the City of Murfreesboro Planning Commission. In accordance with the Executive Order Number 16 issued by Governor Bill Lee, the Murfreesboro Planning Commission November 4th, 2020 meeting will be conducted electronically. So we do have a quorum present with one member, Mr. Ken Halliburton is participating via our Zoom conference. So I believe that's all Mr. Ives needed to make sure that I let everyone know. Thank you, Mr. Ives. So we will begin our meetings tonight with our public hearings. We do have three public hearings tonight. The first one is a zoning application for a planned signage overlay district zoning for Costco Wholesale for approximately 20.2 acres located along Beezy Road and Warrior Drive. Costco Corporation is the applicant. Ms. Stevens?
Good evening. The subject property is located at 1524 Beezy Road, 1512 Beezy Road and 1536 Beezy Road. It's located along Warrior Drive and Beezy Road. The property consists of approximately 20.19 acres. The property is zoned light industrial. The purpose of the planned sign overlay is to allow the applicant an opportunity to present a cohesive plan for the entire project that addresses everything from permanent building signage to temporary signs. The proposed planned sign overlay would allow larger and additional attached signs than allowed by the existing sign ordinance. The following table provides information as it pertains to the current sign ordinance, as well as the signage proposed in the planned sign overlay. The first signs will address are from the warehouse. Our sign ordinance would allow three maximum per building at two square feet per linear foot of building front. The maximum aggregate would be 450 square feet. And illumination would be allowed internally or externally. Costco is proposing they be allowed to have six attached signs. The signs attached to the south and west have elevation slightly larger than one square feet per linear foot aggregate to which they are attached. The signs attached to the north and east have less than one square foot per linear foot. The aggregate of all attached signs is 1,745 square feet. Although that is a pretty significant difference between what the sign ordinance will allow, we feel that because of the size of the building and it is less per linear foot than what is allowed by the ordinance, it would not look unusual or out of place. External illumination is proposed with an option to internally illuminate in the future. Right now, they're just proposing to have like exterior lighting to shine down on the lights so the Costco words are not illuminated internally. The car wash is pretty much the same. By sign ordinance, you're allowed three per maximum two square feet per linear foot for maximum aggregate of 450. They are proposing to attach signs, the linear foot of the elevation to which the signs attach, 126 for the south and east elevations, and they're proposing 70.67 square feet and externally eliminated as well. The gas canopies are actually less than what our sign ordinance allows, so that there's really no increase there. So they're 20.84 square feet each. The convenience signs are signs that the sign ordinance allows for the convenience of the public to get to and from inside the parking lot. Our sign ordinance allows those to be three square feet. Some of the signs they're proposing are slightly larger, signs that would be placed near the car wash and gas station and to get delivery trucks and that kind of thing in and out. The temporary signs, I've divided these up a little bit different because some of the temporary signs that they're proposing are different than what we typically allow. So the temporary signs by banner, we allow them to be attached to the building. You have two per lot at 120 aggregate square feet of display areas, what our sign ordinance would allow. They're proposing they can have five maximum per lot, but they are proposing 160 aggregate square feet for display area. So some of the signs, if they have one sign up that's 160 square feet, that's all they're allowed. If they have, if they want to do three signs, the total of the three can't be more than 160 square feet. The sandwich board signs, they typically use sandwich board signs for their gas prices. So they're really more permanent use, but they are temporary in nature by the city sign ordinance. We allow sandwich board signs to be six square feet per side with a three feet in overall height maximum. They're requesting 16 and a half square feet per side with a 4.83 overall height. Again, we feel like that because of their use, this is probably an acceptable size requirement difference. Sandwich board signs are typically seen like in your downtown area along the sidewalk, and this is going to be in a different setting and used on a more permanent basis. Then the next, the last one is, these are just for under construction. They've asked to have some specific signs just during construction. So our sign ordinance doesn't necessarily address signs under construction. We call them other temporary signs. And these are three signs per lot, 32 square feet maximum, 12 feet maximum height. And then our timeframe is 10 days after the conclusion of a temporary purpose. They're requesting three signs per lot, 64 square feet, a maximum aggregate of 128 square feet display area, and a 12 feet height. And they will remove at opening. So they won't be, you won't see them again after construction's over. They have not proposed any ground or freestanding wall signs. So the only signs they're going to have are be placed on the building, a car wash in the, in the gas canopies. We have with us Costco representative Steve Warfield and Eric Braun make a brief presentation, answering questions you have after where's we need to conduct a public hearing on the matter and formulate a recommendation to City Council.
Good evening. My name is Eric Brand. I'm a director of real estate development for Costco Wholesale. And I've asked Marina to put up the elevation sign just so you can see the context of the sign versus the size of the building. When we first started looking at your sign ordinance, we realized that the word Costco was larger than the allowed square footage on the front of the building, on the entire building. So Marina has worked with us. The staff has been great to deal with. And our signage is pretty minimal on the building. It's limited basically to the Costco Wholesale signs and then one of the exterior signs for the tire center. Then, of course, we have the gas station signage. I don't know if you noticed on the sandwich board, it had a gas price of $3.75. So that's an old picture. We've been using that one for a while. But the signage at the gas station is small. We don't have a large reader board, like say the racetrack has a big lit up sign. Our gas station is members, member only. So the members that come know they're going to get a value. The sign is really there for their, you know, so they can look at it and see if they want to do it. We have, we put one at the gas station, and then there's another one right at the, in the entry canopy on the picture you're looking at right now. And they are, it's a sandwich board. They change the numbers every day and put the sign out. We do not do freestanding pylon signs. In the words of our founder, the building's 158,000 square feet. Don't you think that's a big enough sign? So that's where we're at. And respectfully ask that you approve our request tonight, and we'll move on hopefully to the City Council tomorrow night. If anybody has any questions, be happy to answer.
Questions before we open the public hearing? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we will open the public hearing, and we will ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak either for or against this item. If you come forward, please state your name and address and make all your comments to the planning commission. Mr. Harney?
My name is John Harney. I live at 6748 Westgum Road here in Murfreesboro. I'm a commercial real estate broker. I'm here tonight to represent the West Point Development where Costco is going. And we are certainly in favor of the PSO overlay signage proposal they've got. Just like Eric had said, when you've got 158,000 foot building, if you put the normal sign to be allowed by the ordinance, it would just be minuscule. So we think this is reasonable. We've been over and looked at the signage they use in Cool Springs, which is very similar and seems very appropriate for the site. So we're certainly in support of it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Harney. Anybody else? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. And any further questions or comments from the planning commission? I will, before we move on, I didn't mention, and I should go ahead and say, that for all of our votes tonight, since we do have one of our members participating electronically, when we have motions, we will take the motions and then we will call roll for our votes. So just FYI for all the members of the planning commission and those listening to us tonight. There's no further questions, then I guess we are ready for a motion.
Make a motion that we approve subject to all staff comments.
A second?
So we have a motion and a second. And Ms. Rush, you're going to call roll?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Garland?
Aye.
Commissioner Halliburton?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Salas?
Aye.
Commissioner Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Thank you all very much. And you know, we're excited to have you all here. So moving right along. Our next item is Item B, and this is a zoning application for approximately 10.7 acres located at the northeast corner of New Salem Highway and Warrior Drive to be rezoned from RS-15 to Commercial Highway. Investment Partners, Inc. is the applicant. Ms. Rush?
Yes, thank you. The property is located along the northeast corner of Warrior Drive and New Salem Highway. The applicant is Investment Partners Incorporated, and they're requesting to rezone the property from RS-15, which is single-family residential, to Commercial Highway. The purpose of the Commercial Highway District is to provide areas for general commercial development that are located along highways or higher traveled corridors. Chart one of the zoning ordinance, Appendix A, lists out the permitted and conditional uses within each of the zoning districts. Chart one with the highlight for CH was included in the staff reports as part of the agenda to identify which specific uses could be allowed per the zoning district. The applicant has indicated that there's no development proposed at this time. However, they did share a concept plan with staff that did depict a gas station with a convenience store and several restaurants, some of them fast food, in this location near the off ramp. Adjacent land uses are Commercial Highway to the south, which includes a gas station and a car wash, as well as apartments where the RM-16 zoning is. The property to the southeast is going to be developed with a self-storage, mini-storage facility that has received site plan approval but has not been constructed yet. Across the street of New Salem Highway to the west is a gas station, and further west is the Costco facility that we just discussed, the prior agenda item. The future land use map for this property does identify general commercial as the most appropriate future land use. The requested zoning of CH is consistent with this future land use map. It does allow for those higher intensity commercial types of uses. The action that's needed for this evening is the planning commission, if you could hold a public hearing, and then formulate a recommendation to the City Council regarding this rezoning. I'm happy to answer any questions of the commission. And the developer's representative is here this evening, Matt Taylor from SEC. Thank you.
Okay. And any, okay. So any questions from the planning commission before we open the public hearing? All right. So we will open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak either for or against this item. Okay. We will close the public hearing and ask for comments and questions from the planning commission. I will just comment that I believe it seems like a very logical rezoning request for this property. So that was my thought when I looked at this, when it came through, and not sure.
I would agree with that. And so with that said, I'll move to approve subject to all staff comments.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, and we will call roll. Ms. Rush?
Commissioner Garland?
Aye.
Commissioner Halliburton?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Salas?
Aye.
Commissioner Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Motion passes. All right. Thank you all very much. Our next item is Item C, and it is a zoning application for approximately 13.1 acres located along the north side of West Thompson Lane to be rezoned from RS-15 to PRD. King's Landing Villas and Black Diamond Development is the applicant. And is Ms. Green here tonight? Or are you doing this, Ms. Rush?
Ms. Green is not here available this evening, but I will help present on this item.
Okay, thank you.
The subject property is located along the north side of West Thompson Lane and west of Northborough Court. It is 13.1 acres in size and currently zoned RS-15 as shown on the screen. The property consists presently of four to six mobile homes that are on the property that are currently being used as rental properties. The applicant, Black Diamond Development, is requesting to rezone this property to planned residential district in order to allow for the development of 74 dwelling units, which is an overall density of 5.65 dwelling units per acre. This was presented to the planning commission as a workshop item last month where it was 71 units. So just wanted to bring that to your attention, that they did increase the unit count to 73. They removed one of the single-family residential lots and put a townhome building on that one. The subject property completely surrounds a 2.2 acre lot, as you can see, which has a single-family residence on it. The developers indicated that they've tried to acquire that property to include it in the development, but the property owner is not interested in selling the property at this time, but possibly in the future. The majority of the surrounding properties are zoned RS-15. Tuscany PRD is approximately 345 feet to the west. General's Landing is approximately 530 feet to the east. Miller Coliseum and Siegel Soccer Complex are further to the east, and Northside Baptist Church is directly to the south, and Siegel High School is to the southeast. This is a quarter that we are seeing a transformation occurring. There have been other residential developments and townhome developments occurring along this portion of West Thompson Lane. The King's Landing Planned Residential District, as I said, was 13.12 acres in size and will consist of 46 townhomes and 28 single-family residential detached lots. The streets will be public right of way, and solid waste services will be provided by the city. I'm going to scroll through to get to... The single-family detached homes are proposed to be on individual lots of record, and they would be backing up to an existing single-family lots located along Northborough Court. They would have a 35 front foot setback with a two-car minimum garage, and each dwelling will maintain the 35 foot front setback to allow four cars to park in the driveway. These are comparable lots to our RS-6 zoning district. The single-family attached townhomes would be sold under a horizontal property regime. These would each have two-bedroom units as a minimum with a one-car garage, and then the three-bedroom units will have two-car garages. They each will have a 35-foot front setback for the garage. In the RSA District, which is the most similar district for the townhome development, it does require an open space of a minimum of 10%. The applicants indicated that they're proposing 2.71 acres of open space, which exceeds this requirement. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention because it was left as an open item in the staff report. So they have identified 2.71 acres, of which approximately 0.65 acre is going to be formal open space. Their formal open space appears to be the playground structure and some other facilities. The applicant is not, has not identified any exceptions that they're asking for this development. So at this point, that is consistent with all the zoning district. The future land use map indicates that suburban residential character is the most appropriate for the subject property. Suburban residential is the lower density. It's the RS-15, RS-10, RS-12 zoning districts. What they're proposing is more consistent with general residential, which are the higher densities. And so this is not consistent with our 2035 future land use map. It is consistent with what's happening around the area for this, for this street, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that you would have to discuss whether or not this is the appropriate occasion to modify the future land use map for the proposal. A public neighborhood meeting was held, was conducted by the developer on September 29th at McKnight's Park Pavilion, and there were residents that attended. What I understand, the majority of the concerns were drainage and traffic. I do see several residents here this evening, and so I believe they'll might be speaking to that as well. So the staff is asking that the planning commission conduct a public hearing and formulate a recommendation to the City Council. The applicant's representative, Huddleston Steel Engineering, is here this evening. Both Clyde Roundtree and Enoch is here, as well as the developer. I'm happy to answer any questions from the planning commission if you wish.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
Mr. Rush, I have a question for you, please.
Yes, sir.
How may the planning staff see this differently than maybe a project that we've had on a different side of town where we asked an applicant who, there were three properties, and customer obtained one. We asked the applicant to go back and obtain another one because of the property next to it. Excuse me. The staff did not feel as though there was enough road frontage for this particular property, so the staff asked the applicant to go back and purchase or acquire the property next to them. My concern are just looking at this, I'm curious what staff thinks is, considering it's a opening to the, to the neighborhood, then the two-acre home that's in between it, and then another opening to the neighborhood, does the staff have any concern over consistency or cohesiveness to the road frontage that it faces on North Thompson Lane?
Well, it does provide a break between the two streets. So in terms of whether or not something could fit for development, it does fit for development purposes. Is it ideally from a planning perspective? Not necessarily, because it would be better to have it as a more cohesive plan. If this was, if this property was to come forward for development in the future, the city staff and the planning commission, I would assume, would encourage that development to follow the same development pattern that's being proposed here this evening. But it does, in terms of does the development fit, it does have room for the units that they are proposing. Aesthetically, it still is going to show as a single-family residence.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salas. Any other questions before we open the public hearing? Mr. Roundtree, did you have anything you wanted to present before we open the public hearing? I believe Ms. Rush covered it all, but you might have something.
Chairman Jones, planning commissioners, my name is Clyde Roundtree, Huddleston Steel Engineering. And as Marina mentioned, I'm accompanied by Kelly Wilson and Randy Fritzen from Black Diamond Construction, and also Enoch Gerald from Huddleston Steel, and Brian Oliver, who is the architect on this project. Both Brian and Enoch will be speaking upon my completion of my presentation. So I'll walk you through the site plan. Marina did a good job. I know she's pinching for Margaret Ann. I was able to speak with Margaret Ann last night. We've been hitting around this plan quite a bit to make sure it satisfies all the expectations of the city and try to maximize the opportunity for developers as well. So with that in mind, let me just walk you through a few slides that kind of talk us through this project. The first thing that we just want to mention, Enoch will get to speak more about hydrology. At our neighborhood meeting, we did talk to the neighbors, and the primary concern they had was with drainage. We are developing this property very consistently with what happened over on the eastern side of Northborough Court, which is the General's Landing Project. Brian Burns, who is the developer on that project, committed to Northborough that he would do his best to alleviate any drainage concerns they had on their piece of property. On those, the neighbors along Northborough that were adjacent to General's Landing, Mr. Fritzen's done the same thing for Northborough on the western side. We've, we've spoken with the neighbors, and we are willing to do what we can to help alleviate their concerns. Northborough as a neighborhood was basically, on its inception, was placed a little bit lower than it should have been, so it has a little propensity towards flooding. So we had our neighborhood meeting, the neighbors came out and showed us all kinds of pictures of them and boats and those kind of things. And so we know it's a problem. We learned about the problem at General's Landing, but we do believe that we can help alleviate the problem to somewhat. So Enoch's going to speak more about that. But I did want to tell you, there's not a lot of slope on the property, but it does slope from north to south towards West Thompson Lane. As far as adjacent relationships, as Marina mentioned, West Thompson Lane's changing quickly, but right now, the lot's pretty much open path but right now, the lot's pretty much open pasture land with six trailers that are, you know, on the property. They will be removed upon this project getting started. As Marina mentioned, I'll just bring a little history to the project. That two-acre site that you mentioned, Mr. Fritzen has approached that. Homeowner, they are the ones selling the property. They have a special needs child, so they don't want to sell the property now, and the fact that they don't really want to disrupt her life. But the city staff at one point did make us master plan over the top of that existing home to make sure that we weren't doing anything that would kind of sandbag the future of that lot. And then in our pattern book, they wanted us to identify ingress and egress onto that two-acre site to make sure that we're just not kind of backdooring it. We are proposing a buffer, you know, upon the initiation of the project that would screen them out from the development. However, we're going to make sure that whoever develops that, Mr. Fritzen and Black Diamond Construction, has every intention to buy that property whenever it becomes available, but until that time, the city want to make sure that if that doesn't work out for Black Diamond Construction, that ingress and egress is prepared or planned for in the pattern book. As far as Marina mentioned, the church is across the street. It has a little bit of an institutional character along the southern side of West Thompson Lane, and then on the northern side, it's primarily residential and of various different kinds of densities, and so we are more consistent, as Marina mentioned, with the general residential versus the suburban residential, and we'd be much more consistent with what we see at General's Landing as far as character of development. On the overall site plan, just to kind of walk you through it, all the drainage is moving from the northern side of the property to the southern side of the property, so all of our detention areas are up along West Thompson Lane. That is a good thing and a bad thing. The good thing is, is it provides green space transitions between the main access road and the developments that probably screen it. And based on the new regulations for detention pond areas, we feel like that can actually be a real asset to the development. Because of the new emphasis on aesthetic quality of detention areas, we've enhanced the landscaping. We no longer made it square like a box with a fence around it, so it's going to have to have a little bit of an aesthetic pleasing the edge to it. And so we feel like, at the end of the day, it's going to feel more like a green space asset to the development versus just a functional component of the development. And as is mentioned, along the main corridor, adjacent to North Borough is all the single-family homes, and that was really to be sensitive to North Borough, making sure that we're putting single-family residential detached homes against single-family residential detached homes as well. We went through several generations on the master plan regarding traffic calming, and we have a traffic circle in this development. We had two prior to this design, and what we are trying to accomplish is just a way to kind of break down the linear nature of the road and also to make sure it's not a cut-through that people can speed through. The anticipation, the reason the traffic circle has really moved towards the northern part of the property is that we anticipate, or at least the city's helping us anticipate, that the future development on the north side will be accommodated by this road as well. So that's why the traffic calming component came in, and that's why it's located where it is. It did create an opportunity for us to create a really nice amenity area, and as Marina mentioned, we're exceeding our green space requirement as well as our open space requirement. And within that open space, we do have a dog run area, and I know that's kind of getting a little cliche these days, but the fact is, is that it is needed. We did put it closest to the detached homes, knowing that they won't have their own individual yards, per se, but it'd be nice to have a congregation area for their pups. And then we have the mail kiosks, it's somewhat centralized in the development, which is right off the roundabout, and then we have a pavilion area and a playground area as well. One of the things that happened is, and we are learning this as well, just from the development, working with the planning staff, is we had all of our guest parking associated with the green space on the northern end of the property. One of the renditions that we just came through with the staff is to add some guest parking on the...more towards the southern end of the development. So if you can see, there's a guest parking typical located right on the other access drive, right before you get to the second, you know, the right side of the townhomes. So that was a way to kind of break up some parking for guests. We are overparked as far as expectations. As was mentioned, there are two-car garages with four cars out on the driveway, and on our one-car garage townhomes, we actually have three-car driveways, so we're hoping we're going to exceed the expectations for parking. But it's kind of a nice design. That's what that little bevel is, is it goes into the one-bedroom. You can actually tuck a car in that little beveled area on the concrete. We did work through some easement concerns. Because of the concern from North Borough neighborhood, on the western edge of our...on the eastern edge of our property, we had to provide an enlarged easement. So we have a...we basically have a landscape buffer requirement plus a drainage easement, so those homes are set off...this rear setback's twenty-five feet to accommodate that. And so that's...that was really in response to the neighborhood, and the other...all the thing...all that shows in blue on this exhibit is really drainage easements. Everything that's kind of more the pink-purple color are utility easements. And as was mentioned, if you see the hatch, just like a yellow hatched area adjacent to that home that's not being developed, that's our ingress and egress area, so we just wanted to identify it on the plan, so it's represented in the pattern book. Landscaping-wise, there are some existing trees along the North Borough neighborhood property line. Our little catch-22 is, we've talked to the neighbors, it's a pretty nice buffer as it stands. If we end up helping them with some drainage concerns, we're probably going to be cutting through that buffer in their backyard, so we're going to have to make sure that we have a Type A on our side to provide some screening, but we're going to try to keep as much of that existing material intact, so that's one of our challenges. As was mentioned, on landscape plan, the entry drive coming over those...coming through those detention areas has been enhanced with vermin and landscaping and shrubbery, so it's going to be a very nice entry sequence coming through the development. We have three trees along, you know, along the whole corridor, all the new roads, and perimeter planting around the remaining property lines. This exhibit basically shows us detention ponds and also the signage component. Because it's on West Thompson Lane, staff wanted to make sure that it had a really aesthetic feel, and so that's where the split rail fence comes, the enhanced landscaping and a really high-quality sign are all designed to really kind of set this development apart. I do think it's going to be an asset in terms of, if you look at General's Landing, which is a very nice development, very successful development, you still see a lot of it from West Thompson. I think ours is going to feel much more recessed, so I think it's going to add a real nice flavor to the development. With that in mind, I'd like to ask Mr. Brian Oliver if he'd come up and explain the architectural components. I'm available after his presentation. He needs presentation for any questions he may have, and after the public hearing, we'd love to respond to their concerns. All you got to do is just go down.
Hi.
Hello, Mr. Oliver.
Hello. As Clyde mentioned, architecturally, we have three different building types. A single-family home, this is one of the examples of single-family. We have then the two- and three-bedrooms townhomes, which are connected. This picture shows probably the most information on it, and when you think about townhomes, a lot of times you think about just flat, and these townhomes are layered, both front, stepping front and back, and up and down, and also having different materials. We've got brick, stone, and then we're also using cultured...the hardy board, cementitious board in board and batten design, and the lap siding, as well as details with cedar posts and corbels and shutters. And we've stepped it back and forth quite a bit on the front and the back. Staff worked with us on some design thoughts. And I just killed it. Here we go. Okay. So we have some six units, some four units, some single families, and they're all kind of variations on a theme as far as materials and colors, and I think the staff was pretty excited about it. I know we were, and talking with the community, they asked for more brick, which we provided them as well. I think that's pretty much it. We have standing seam roofs and architectural shingles as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Oliver.
Members of the Planning Commission, I'm Enick Gerald with Huddleston Steel Engineering. As Clyde mentioned on the...where's that drainage easement that's on there? There was some concerns on the neighborhood about storm drainage. These areas are...it's really flat, literally level, their rear yards. North Borough was developed in the late sixties, I guess. It's a separate exhibit somewhere. Where is it? It's a separate exhibit on the thing. But we met with the neighbors in North Borough. Their backyards are flat and water stands in there, and so we...I went out and walked it not long ago with some of the...our staff, and then we're going to do some surveying in their rear yards. If you look at the plan, north is to the right. West Thompson Lane is to the left. North Boroughs would be to the bottom of this screen, and what we've agreed to do...they do have a...it's an old farm fence that's on their property and ours and some tree rows. We're going to survey their rear yards, and when some drainage swells where we can, through some of the trees. Most of that tree row is hackberries. There's some hardwoods in there, but we're going to run some drainage swells into our swell to help alleviate some of the problems they have with storm drainage. There's also from the north, which, if you look at this screen, it's to the right, it's ten or twelve acres that drains off-site through us. There's one track that's three, four hundred foot deep, and it goes into the city property where they have some soccer fields and things like that. But we're going to accommodate the off-site drainage from that area. Now, there are a couple of homes at the end of the cul-de-sac at North Borough that are low. We're going to put in a drainage swell that's a couple of feet deep. We'll be able to accommodate the off-site from the north, but the couple of houses in the rear of that cul-de-sac that just naturally don't drain, and they really won't...we won't be able to help them, to tell you the truth. We're going to do what we can to the neighbors who are adjacent to us. We'll be able to help with their drainage concerns, but just want to let you know that the ones at the very end of the cul-de-sac are just lower, and we will be, like I say, putting in a swell a couple of foot deep and be able to accommodate the adjacent neighbors, but there's...and the two at the end of the cul-de-sac are really not adjacent to us anyway, so it'd be...it's really be tough. But we will be doing what we can from a drainage standpoint to help alleviate some of the neighbors' concerns. We had a note on the drawing that we would do some field surveying, and we would, you know, if applicable, or I think the word we used was...or if the term...if feasible, that we would help them, and we are going to help them. I know they had some concerns that they were saying, if you...make sure it's feasible. I have walked it, and it will. We'll be able to help the adjacent neighbors' rear yards that are leveled and flat and help drain some of that stormwater. So I just wanted to sort of tell you where we were from a stormwater standpoint. We have looked at this. The detentions are out front. Like I say, West Thompson Lane is scheduled to be widened to a five-lane section by the state. I think in the meantime, we'll be in...we'll be putting in a...if that don't happen soon enough, we may be putting in a third-lane sections for a center turn lane for access into the property, so that's all I have. Unless you have any questions.
Okay. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Mr. Gerald. All right. I think we have some people that might want to speak, so we will open this public hearing. We will...I'll just remind you that if you come forward to speak, please state your name and address. Your comments will be limited to three minutes. Please make all your comments to the Planning Commission and not to the developers or other members of the audience. And so we will open the public hearing and ask any one to come forward that would like
Thank you. I'm a little short. I'm Linda Dansby, and I reside at thirty-four twenty-two North Borough Court, which is Lot twenty-two, if you have a plat. I don't know that it's noted on your plat. I am a retired paralegal that worked in zoning, land use, and codes enforcement, and so I have some concept of what they're working with. I want to tell you that I do appreciate Mr. Roundtree, Mr. Fritzen, and Enick for meeting with us in the neighborhood. They have definitely met and exceeded our request. One of them was that the homes that back up to North Borough Court be in brick, because our homes are in brick, and then the homes in General's Landing that also back up to us were brick, so that kept the consistency. We also appreciate the white rail fence because it sort of matches Miller Coliseum, and it keeps that rural look at least for about a mile. I do need to bring to the attention of the traffic department. In the turn lane and the entrance and exits that we have so very close together, there have been numerous accidents already with General's Landing, and this street or the State Department, somebody came out and marked the turn lane to even make it more confined so people are not running the center lane and trying to get in and out of the subdivisions along there. The main thing that we've had to worry with in our subdivision has been drainage, and from Enick's comments and those of Mr. Roundtree and the developer, it sounds like that they're going to make every effort to address those issues as much as they can. I understand that no developer can have water come on anybody else's property, and drainage easement was a part of the original plat, and that was never addressed. We do not have stormwater drainage on North Borough Court. It was an old subdivision, and we just failed to address those issues, so we appreciate the city helping us take care of past issues and addressing that along with this development. We have no problem with the rezoning request or the development as it's proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dansby. Appreciate you coming out. Anybody else? You're it. Okay. All right. Well, we will close the public hearing then and ask for further comments and questions from the Planning Commission.
I had one. I'm not sure who's best to address it. Interesting, the roundabout at the end of the property, it conspicuously kind of sticks out, so is that specifically related to the kiosk or what exactly?
I'd probably have to defer to Sam or Greg. I believe it was because of the through connection, the stub street for future traffic.
Hey, Marina. I'm...
Mr. Halliburton.
I believe there's...is that Ken?
Yes. Go ahead, Mr. Halliburton. Oh, is that Mr. Bromley?
Yeah. Madam, it's actually Mr. Bromley. I'd like to address that if it pleased the commission. The reason that we had tasked the applicant with traffic calming was because of the possibility of the extension of that roadway to the north, to the north, if the properties to the north ever develop, we didn't want it to become a straight shot. We wanted there to be some traffic calming. So we tasked the applicant with providing traffic calming, and the solution that they came up with was a roundabout. They actually originally proposed the roundabout further to the south, but it's our opinion that roundabouts work best when they are actually at an intersection, so we had them move that back to the...to that ninety-degree intersection towards the back of the development, and it will function the same way to slow down traffic if that stub street to the north is ever extended northward. And so does that answer your question, Mr. Martin?
Hey, Matthew. Thank you. I guess it does somewhat. I think the thing that is a little different that I have not seen is that there's an additional parcel and then the city-owned property north of that, so I think if it were one parcel, that would make consistent sense to me, I think, because it's two parcels that would have to develop together, because it's unlikely that there would be a street on that slim area in the back of that, where that cul-de-sac or where that roundabout is, if that makes sense.
It does, and I think that what we're doing is we're preparing for the eventual possibility that the city property, the old Jordan Farm, will not be used infinitely for the spraying of repurified water, and that there's the possibility that that may...that property may develop at some point in the future. So we are trying to prepare for that possibility. So, so, we are trying to prepare for that possibility.
That, that helps. And last question is, I can't see the second phase of Caroline Farms there, but do you know if Caroline Farms attaches to where it can cut through to that other piece or not? So, we, so we have multiple connections on that side?
I don't believe that Caroline Farms actually will connect back to the, to the west. I believe that, and, and I may look towards Mr. Huddleston. He may, he may be able to, to confirm. I believe Caroline Farms stubs to the north for an eventual connection with, with Cherry Lane. But I don't believe there's any, any connectivity from Caroline Farms back to the, back to the west.
Mr. Martin, I might just supplement what Mr. Blomley offered there. The Quarter Horse Drive is the north-south road that's proposed from Caroline Farms to Cherry Lane. City purchased a property adjacent to that, to the Siegel Soccer Park in anticipation of the roadwork for Cherry Lane and Quarter Horse Drive. There's an intervening 16-acre tract, as I recall, between that and the Jordan Farm. And so, there'd be opportunities for cross-connectivity to Quarter Horse if, if those properties develop in the future. And, and this street stub were it to extend to the north as well.
Thanks, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Huddleston while we have him? Okay.
Thought I might jump over and maybe add a little bit to Mr. Salas's question earlier about the, the situation on, on the frontage and the, and the two accesses. And, and so, the, the properties that we had looked at before, that was Veterans Parkway and Highway 96, I think, is the, the situation you're referring to. It was two, it was a one-acre track with about 125 feet of frontage. It was at a major intersection, Highway 96 and Veterans Parkway. Those were, and there was an adjacent one-acre lot with that. And we saw those, we're seeing those redevelop. We've, we processed a handful of requests in that, similar to that. So, we did think that, that having a commercial entrance on both of those smaller tracks was not appropriate. And, and so, staff's recommendation on that was to maybe look at an opportunity to, to come back with a, with a larger development track. It also had limited ability for cross-access and through-access. Cross-access meaning lot to lot, and then through-access meaning two adjacent lots or, or lots behind. This property is, is two lots. It's 13 acres. It's, it's about 400 feet of frontage, and I think their design has about 325 feet of separation between two public streets, which will be the, the two-acre track where it to develop independently. You know, our, our thoughts are that it would get access back to one of those two public streets, if not both, and would not have a separate drive out onto Thompson Lane. It's also a little bit mid-block or mid-intersection, if you will. Siegel and Thompson's a significant intersection, very significant intersection, and will be more significant as that area grows. But it's, it's not the same intersection as Veterans and 96. And so, there's just a, a couple of thoughts we had on why this was a, maybe an appropriate request to provide two accesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huddleston. Appreciate that.
Yeah. And I'll just say too, I appreciate Chase asking the question. I think it's a great question. And I think proximity to that intersection at 96 is part of that explanation for me. But I appreciate the question.
Thank you, Ronnie.
Okay. What other questions or comments regarding this application?
I just have one. Did I hear that the owner of that two-acre property is the one selling the, the rest of this property to, or did I mishear that? That's correct. Thank you very much. It's all right.
If there aren't, then I'll be happy to make a motion to approve subject to all staff comments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. So, we'll call roll. Ms. Rush?
Commissioner Garland?
Aye.
Commissioner Halliburton?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Salas?
Aye.
Commissioner Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. So, motion passes. All right. Thank you all very much. Next, we have staff reports and other business. And I know we do have one item of other business, a mandatory referral. Are you taking that, Mr. Ives?
I believe Ms. Jackson is here.
Ms. Jackson's going to take that for us. All right. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. I am Angela Jackson, and I'm here representing the Murfreesboro Parks and Recreation Department. In 2017, the Mark Pirtle Blue Way Park, which is 13 acres at the west fork of the Stones River at Sterling Farmer Lake, was donated to become a part of the park system. And since that time, staff has been looking for ways to increase connectivity for public access there. One possibility is to create a trail on the east side of the river to connect to the existing greenway. And this corridor is about 3,640 linear feet. The present owner of the land to be obtained for the Costco development has agreed to grant the city a conservation easement for the Greenway Trail, excuse me, across approximately one and a half acres along the river, or 440 linear feet, to be donated before that conveyance to Costco. I'm requesting your recommendation of approval to accept this conservation easement. The easement, the easement would allow the city to use the property for a greenway trail, a nature trail, blueways for canoes or kayaks, open space or just a natural unimproved area. I'm also requesting your approval to pursue acquisition by the city of similar easements or other rights away from other property owners along this potential route when and if they become available, as well as your approval to work with T-DOT to cross under the new bridge that is currently under construction at this location. Mr. Ives has worked extensively on this project. He and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions?
If I could just make a comment?
Absolutely.
Just like to commend the city and Ms. Jackson for coming up with another way for us to incorporate parks into our city and our beauty and walkability into our city. I think this is a terrific addition to Murfreesboro. Thank you for bringing it in front of us.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Salas. Any other comments or questions on this item?
There are none. I'll make a motion that we approve subject to all staff comments.
Thank you.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Rush, if you'll call roll.
Yes, I will. Commissioner Garland?
Aye.
Commissioner Halliburton?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Salas?
Aye.
Commissioner Wright?
Aye.
And Chair Jones?
Aye. Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. All right. Any other staff reports or business tonight?
Nothing here. Thank you.
Nothing from me.
Okay. All right. Then we stand adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.